To order, please. Thank you. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the town council meeting. It's a call to order.
Recording in progress.
Recording in progress, just so you know. We do have a couple of members that are absent this evening. We still have a quorum present. Mary Hansen has requested that she attend remotely. And since we do have the quorum physically assembled, I would like someone to make a motion to accept Mary's remote participation in this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Third.
Oh, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes. All right.
Third.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, if the minutes could just reflect that Ms. Hansen is participating electronically for a medical reason and that she is participating from her residence here in Urbana.
Let it be so. All right. We need to make an adjustment in the agenda before we approve it. We have a person from Davenport here to present the paperwork for the interim financing of the well, well number six. If you reflect on the history of this, we have a loan, a 40-year, 1.75% loan from USDA that is already assured, but they won't, they won't cover the project until we have actual functioning well. And so we need to find interim financing for the period from when we start construction until we can get reimbursement and get on that long-term note. We have a gentleman here from Davenport that here to present. What they have done is send out a request for a proposal for that interim loan to, was it 100 banks? So it was 100 banks. We have the three best candidates that are going to be presented to us tonight. We're going to make a verbal commitment at the end of that based on the Davenport recommendation. And then we're going to try to move forward so that we can get that closed and get the well drilled. That being said, I would like a motion for somebody to make an adjustment. And we'll have him speak after the approval of the minutes so that he doesn't have to spend the rest of the evening here listening to us.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'm reading the motion, so you all know what I'm doing. I move to amend the agenda to add, under new business, a presentation by R.T. Taylor of Davenport to discuss options for revenue bond application note.
Second?
Yes.
All right. Sandy?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. The next would be to approve the agenda as amended. Do you have a motion for that? So moved?
I so moved to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sandy? And yes. All right, moving on. The minutes, we have the minutes from December 15th. And what's the other date? The January minutes from January 4th. Is that right? 12th. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I make motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second?
Yes.
Beth Justice seconds. All right, the vote. Sandy?
Yes.
Mayor says yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Moving on. All right. Now, since we've got that, R.T., if you would like to give the presentation for the loan, the interim loan application?
Absolutely. Let me get set up here and I'm going to pass out a hard copy. Excuse me, I'm sorry, sir.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, I do have, R.T. just emailed me the electronic copy, so I will make that public first thing tomorrow and get it sent to the press. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for having me here this evening. As Mayor Goldsmith set it up well, we've been working with the town staff and finance committee regarding the interim financing for the well project. So I'm going to turn to page one, or excuse me, page two. The page numbers are in the bottom right-hand corner of the presentation. We sent out the bank RFP in early January, on January 6th, to approximately 100 or plus local, regional, and national banks. We asked for them to propose by 11:00 a.m. of January 23rd. What we are looking for is a short-term interim financing note in anticipation of getting our long-term funding through the USDA Rural Development Loan Program. We asked the banks for roughly, or to target, a 12-month maturity and an 18-month maturity for the note in anticipation of potential project delays should we run into them. We want to have flexibility in the 12-month to 18-month range. We understand from staff that the project should be completed by this fall, October, November timeframe. But again, the notes are set up such that we have a little bit of wiggle room past that in case there are any delays. That's purposely done for cushion. If you would, turn with me to the next page, page three. Again, the page numbers are in the bottom right-hand corner. We received three bank RFP proposals. One from Huntington Public Capital Corporation, one from KS State Bank, and one from United Bank. They're just in alphabetical order here. No nod has been given as to the ranking from low to high bid here. So on the following pages, we're going to discuss how they ranked and provide some analysis. Again, this page is showing in alphabetical order. And you will note that we've got the 12-month options colored in gold and the 18-month options colored in blue. And before we focus in on the details of this page, I just want to say, we're going to make it a clearer, cleaner summary as we go through the next couple of pages, but we wanted to get one page that showed you at one shot sort of all the main provisions and details along with how the rates stack up. So let me flip you to page five, okay? And based on what we received from the banks, this is ranked from low bid to high bid, left to right. United Bank provided us a discount pricing if we would maintain and set up a depository account with them in the range of about $100,000. It's sort of an interesting requirement, especially in the state of Virginia. But again, we wanted to present it to you. And we feel, based on our conversations with staff, that that might not be, might not be our cup of tea for this, for this. It might just create more issues than what it's worth. The cover bid is Huntington. And they're actually, their 18-month rate was only slightly above the 12-month rate that was discounted by United Bank without any bells and whistles or red tape tied to it. So we've got that additional, call it six months past that one-year timing at roughly just a slightly higher interest rate from the low bid. And so what does that shake out to be for the first 12 months of interest? Which is what we're thinking we'll be able to complete the project in, really is that 12-month period. If you compare line seven under United with deposits, and again, that's not the preferred option, that's roughly $50,000. And then if you look at Huntington, the 18-month rate, that's a little over $50,000. So within about $800 all-in interest over the first 12 months, it's a fairly de minimis amount for that extra six months of flexibility should we need it to get all the construction complete and have, get through USDA's process to get that long-term loan at the advantage rate. So if we turn the page one more time, this, again, is just another summary where you can see where the rates are stacked, low to high. And I won't belabor this page because we sort of set it up on the prior page. But what we want to focus on is option two on the right-hand side of the page, under the blue columns. Again, Huntington provided the 481. If it were to go to full maturity at 18 months, so that's basically spanning over two fiscal years, total interest cost on it would be $76,000. Again, we believe, based on the current projected drawdown schedule, that we would complete the project within a 12-month period. So that is shown on the right-hand side, that $50,794 again. So the Huntington proposal, we went back to them to get a little bit of clarity and a little bit, negotiate a little bit more flexibility. Originally, they were proposing to try to keep at least one year, the note and paying interest on it for one year. We negotiated with them and got clarification today that should the project be completed in the fall timeframe, call it October, November, and USDA is ready to close on your long-term loan at the advantage rate, would they be flexible to let us prepay it at that time as opposed to waiting and have to pay another full, you know, four months of interest, which could be like $17,000? And they said they'd be willing to do that for a 1% prepayment premium, which is fine. That's roughly $10,000 on a million dollar loan. So we thought that was a good concession to get that flexibility. Again, turning to page seven. When you close on this interim financing loan, the bank is going to deposit funds into what we, what we typically work with on tax-exempt financings is there's a state program called the Virginia State Non-Artillery Program. And effectively, it's a state-run pool, completely liquid, so daily liquidity. So it's protected in the investment side. It's very safe investments, treasuries. And it's currently earning about 4.65%, as you can see there on line two. Okay? So over in the blue, the Huntington interest rate is 481. And you're going to be paying 481 in full on a million dollars until you pay off the note. But the offset to that is that you're going to be earning some interest income at 4.65% over the next several months as it's sitting in your account. And what we're proposing is that potentially some of that interest could either be used to, you know, if you have project overruns, the interest earnings could be used for that. Or you can use that to offset the debt service. So knock down some of that $50,000 of interest for your first year. Okay? Turning to one more page, just these, we wanted to give you a sense of where the interest rates are historically as well as currently. And I think what you'll see here, the upshot of the page is that we're still at historically favorable rates despite the movement we've seen since last November for the past year or so. And we believe, again, even though interest rates for your expense have climbed up a little bit over the past year plus, so have your interest earnings potentials. So you're able to earn, like I said, in that SNAP account, 465, even though you're paying 481. So net-net, you're not going to offset it fully because you're going to be drawing down some of those funds during construction. How quickly or slowly you spend those monies is going to impact how much interest you actually earn. But those funds could be used to offset the interest expense on the note. Okay? And before I get to page 10, I just want to open it up for any questions before we dive into the recommendation slide and the next steps, if anybody has any questions.
So just reiterate, at one year, there's no prepayment penalty. There's a 1% kicker for, between the, what are proposed end date, which would be the end of October, until the closing date, or the one-year anniversary, we'd pay a 1%.
That's right. If you went the full 12 months, there'd be absolutely no penalty to pay it off.
Right.
What they're saying is they like the way they priced it. They, but the way they priced it is to get that full year's interest.
Okay.
But because of the timing and having to be aware of USDA's timing on things and not wanting to upset the apple cart there, they were willing to make the concession. Look, we'll, we'll let you prepay it. I mean, they even, they said November, but the banker said, if it has to be October, we're fine. We can make that slight tweak as well. But it'd just be 1% premium to capture some of that differential.
And so the indication is that Huntington seems like they're willing to work with us where the other, United wants us to have $100,000 sitting in their bank, which means we have to open up accounts with them.
That's right.
And we have to keep those accounts going for the term of the loan. And then we have to close them and move everything back to the accounts we already have.
You got it. It's an accounting situation.
Yes.
For lack of a better way of putting it.
And then Kansas State, when you added the additional fees, they priced themselves out of the market.
Yeah, that was an interesting one. We talked about it a little bit. And the way we've set up the analysis is obviously, all three have been compared apples to apples on a drawdown basis. All funds at closing. The caveat to Kansas State, or KS State Bank, was they'd be willing to do a drawdown loan. But by the time you add in the $13,000, $14,000, $15,000 in additional banking and closing fees that they had associated with their proposal, it sort of defeats the purpose. So we think with pulling all the funds and having them down at the ready, all you have to do simply is put it in SNAP, which we help y'all set that up. That's, we do that on a regular basis with those folks. We get it prefilled and basically you just have to put the wire instructions to set up your ACH wire for reimbursement or paying invoices. And you earn your 4.65% or whatever, you know, that's going to change.
Right.
But right now, it's been pretty consistently over 4.5% for the past several months, so.
Okay.
So if anybody else has...
Any other questions?
Any questions? Okay. So if you'll turn with me to page 10, which is the recommendation slide. Based on our review of the proposals, related analyses, and discussion with town staff, the finance committee, and bond counsel, we would recommend moving forward with the Huntington proposal because it gives the town the ability to close on the financing in the timeline you need it by the end of February or early March. You have, the interest rate is completely fixed through 18 months should we need it. It's not a variable rate. It's set at 481 and it's fixed. They are holding it firm through your next meeting, which is the meeting at which we'll present resolutions authorizing the financing as well as form documents that the attorneys will prepare and having your agenda package ahead of time. I think that should be February 3rd, by February 3rd, or about then. And again, the 18-month maturity, we feel for just a few extra basis points, less than $800 over that first-year period or over the, yeah, the first-year period, it really is a no-brainer to get that additional flexibility. Because we don't know with the way supply and demand has been, supply chain issues, is any of that going to impact your project and slow things down, which it may. So, and if for some reason, God forbid, it needs to go and be further extended, we can, we feel pretty comfortable going back to the bank and saying, we need a little more time for USDA to get through its process and the project to be completed. So that's, that's my presentation.
Okay.
Again, I think what we would like to have is a nod or a motion so we know if we're moving in the way of the recommendation. And then that way, we can get on the ball with getting the resolution in the form of documents.
So this evening, we're not looking for a resolution. We just want a motion from council to accept the proposal from Huntington verbally to get the ball rolling, to get that to closing.
Yes, sir. That's right. We don't want to step out of bounds with the legal.
I think what you're asking for is direction from council to move forward with this selection of Huntington. And then at the February 9th meeting, you're going to bring paperwork that will formally select them.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Yes.
But that's still a motion, correct?
Yes.
All right.
No way.
Yeah, don't look at me.
Yeah, is there a motion to direct Davenport and company to move forward with the necessary paperwork with the ultimate goal of selecting Huntington as the financing entity and bring it back at the February 9th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have some discussion? We need the motion and then discussion.
Go ahead. I made the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all right, discussion.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, I'm not on the water committee. Real sharp when it comes to dollars and cents. This USDA loan, we applying for that.
We have been approved for that.
We've been approved for that, okay. But we can't get that money until we've done the job, dug the well and all that.
Correct.
So we have, we have to get this money, pay for it, and then they'll give us the money, right?
Correct. Yep, that's exactly. Yeah, I mean, this, this, there's multiple steps here that are sort of mandated out of our control. We have to drill the well because the Department of Environmental Quality has required us to drill a well with a new style of casing, a new construct. That has to be done by the end of 2024. The money for that is, the cost, the estimate for that is $1,560,000, which USDA has approved us for based on how well the water system does. But they won't pay for a dry hole. So we need to have a well that's functioning in order for them to set up that 40-year note. The Huntington proposal is to give us the money to find water, to get the well set up. And then once that is done, then that loan will be replaced by the 40-year note at 1.75%.
And that's a 12 and 18-month thing you're talking about.
But we're going to, the recommendation is to go with the 18-month so that we have some flexibility in terms of any overruns in terms of the time, the timing of the well construction.
And the 481 is actually lower than the 12-month option that United proposed without doing the additional deposit requirement.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It makes sense to me. It's just one of the steps we got to go through here, so.
Any other discussion?
I think we have to do it.
Yep, all right. Let's have a vote. Sandy?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mary? We saw yes.
We're following.
Yes.
And I say yes. All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you. We'll see you back at the February 9th meeting.
All right. We approved the minutes. Town administrator, you're, Garth, you're letting everybody else speak because the, there's an overlap with the different reports. Treasurers report, Michelle?
Yes, sir. As per email out, if anybody has any questions?
Questions, anyone?
No.
Yeah, you can just look at mine there. The good news is that our balance slowly creeps up, which is excellent news.
This lodging tax seems to be doing much better than it used to do, Michelle. Is that because you're being more aggressive about getting it?
Sometimes.
Is that mostly Chesapeake Inn or is that also the Airbnbs?
That includes the Inn and all the Airbnbs.
Okay.
And it looks like the meals tax is holding up, too.
The meals tax, there was some delinquencies collected.
Was that Oyster Festival? Was that?
Oyster Festival is a separate line. And when I made this report, there was five outstanding. We're down to two.
She's into tax collection as well as...
Oh, yeah, adding furniture as well.
You can't be a treasurer of no money, so you have to go out and get the money?
Should I mention that model?
All right. I guess we're moving on to the finance committee. And I've agreed to take it one more time. Sandy Sturgill is now the finance committee chair. We're letting her get a little more adapted to her new position on council and as a member of committees. We did have a meeting of the finance committee last Friday. And we discussed, basically, we reviewed all the projects that we have in position. And that includes the, this town hall acquisition, how that's going to be financed, the sale of the old town hall, the well project, the boundary line adjustment, the pool, and water system infrastructure upgrades. Some of those items will be coming up under new business later with H. Environmental Contracts. And that's a totally separate deal from this USDA loan that we just went through. That has to do with BDH and covering the $7.6 million of estimated costs of replacing the water lines in this town over a period of time. And there's some steps along the way that we need to do to put ourselves in position to have that money accessible to us. But those were the things that were discussed in the finance committee. We did decide to, well, that one, we didn't change the time. And in the February, March timeframe, we're going to be working on the initial draft of the upcoming budgets. Anything that I'm missing there, Roy? Okay. Moving on, Barbara, Pool. Barbara Hartley is the chairman of the Pool Committee, and we'll give the Pool Committee report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've been working really hard on this. We had a Pool Committee meeting on January 23rd. And at that time, the members of the committee voted to change the meeting time from Friday afternoons to Mondays at 1:00 p.m. Other discussion at the meeting included a number of things, starting with building process and timelines. Now, on Wednesday, the 11th, Garth, Roy, Bill Goldsmith, Chris DeAnzavino, and I all met with Jack Heisler, the contractor, for a walkthrough of the construction grounds. And our builder still believes the pool could be ready for an opening on Memorial Day or soon afterwards. But he's still waiting for the architect's final drawings. And really, nothing can move ahead until we have those because we need those to get the final figures for the costs. And we need them so that we can apply for the, I think there are three permits that we have to get, the first one being the ground disturbance permit. So all of these things are hopefully moving forward. There's a little bit of disagreement among the builders and planners as to whether or not DEQ might hold us up. Our builder is telling us there's no reason that should happen. But our architect is telling us, no, I think that's going to happen. So that remains to be seen. We've talked about fundraising and fees for the pool. First of all, we are, and I see in our package that we have a memorandum of agreement with the Friends of Urbana. Okay, so that's part of my report that we are moving forward to do that. And the reason we're doing that is because we want to make sure that if people want to make a tax-deductible contribution, it goes into a 501(c)(3). And Friends of Urbana is already set up with a 501(c)(3), and their mission statement aligns perfectly with what we're trying to do. They have verbally agreed to accept the monies for us and basically act as our banker on this pool program. Now, we will also be hosting some fundraisers to benefit the pool, a 50-50 raffle at Farmer's Market, oyster roast, auctions of items from the old pool, advertising for your business on the fence as a sponsor, whatever else we can think of. These are some of the ideas we've come up with. Any funds raised in excess of the construction costs will be used to create... Any funds raised in excess of the construction costs will be used to create a pool fund reserve of $100,000. For sustainability in excess will go into the Tabor Fund. We have devised a preliminary ladder of fundraising for the pool's construction, and these are the tax deductible contributions. If you want to contribute between $1 and $99, you'll be a spat. Oysters are $100 to $399. Jimmy's are $400 to $599. Sooks would contribute $600 to $999. Osprey, $1,000 to $299. The Eagle level would be a contribution of $3,000 to $499. And if you contribute $5,000 or more, you will be a Tabor patron. Continued annual contributions under the above categories can be made and recognized on an annual basis. Then we have charter memberships. Now, this, these are not tax deductible because you will be getting something in return. These will provide a major boost of financial support but will be handled differently. Although the benefits will be basically the same, whether in the town or outside of the town limits, there will be a cost differentiation between the town residents who are already supporting the pool through taxes and those who live outside of the town. So town residents may choose to contribute, if they want to, $12,000 toward the pool construction, and in return, their residence will include free use of the pool for the usable life of the pool. And keep in mind, how long did this one last? 60 years? So if it lasts that long, that's pretty darn good, because what happens is if you sell your house and you've made this contribution, it goes with the residence. So that is an added benefit of buying the house. If you live outside of town, you can still do that, but instead of contributing $12,000, you'll need to contribute $15,000. Then we are talking about corporate charter memberships, which would include marinas, hotels, other businesses we haven't named as yet. These would have to be negotiated based on type and size of the business. We've also devised a preliminary structure for user fees to be implemented once the pool is open to the public. And we also discussed methods of properly tracking those user fees. And I don't think we came to an absolute decision on those, but we're still playing with those, right?
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, children six and under who are accompanied by a paying adult are free. Each town residence will receive three free passes for the season, and once those have been exhausted, the resident can pay $5 for a day pass or $12 for a family day pass, and that will admit up to six people at a time. Now, you can also get an individual pass, individual season pass for $100, or you can get a family season pass for $200, which means you don't have to pay every time you go. That's in town, yes, we're still on in town. Now, if you're a county resident or outside of town, you can get the day pass for an individual for $8, or a family pass for $25, which again admits up to six people at a time. Then they also have individual season passes for $200, or a family season pass for $400. And again, the reason for the difference between the costs for in-town residents and out-of-town residents is because those of us living in town are already contributing to this pool through our taxes, our town taxes, which the county residents are not paying. Okay. Swim team members will have no charge for in-town swimmers and $50 for a swimmer for out-of-town. Now, let's see, almost finished here. There is an additional project that we're working on. It could fall under fundraising, but not sure exactly where that's gonna fall. And that is raising money to build a walkway between the parking lot and the pool entrance. And following up on discussions for additional funding, both Kristi Ann Savino and Sandy Sturgill have contacted individuals involving the engraving, purchasing, and installation of memorial or celebration bricks, because the person you're celebrating doesn't have to be dead, so it wouldn't be a memorial, it'd be celebration. And at this point, we're planning on lining the edges of the pathway, which will probably be concrete. We discussed cost versus sale price to make this a worthwhile project, and we're currently considering a fee of $175 for each of the four-by-eight-inch customized bricks. Now, we are also working on coordination with a pavilion committee, because we wanna make sure that the pavilion and the pool building, they don't have to be exactly the same, but they need to be in the same area of design, so it looks like it's not hodgepodge, they're made to work together. But we are discussing completing a memorandum of understanding. I don't think we've done that one yet, have we?
No.
Okay, with the Urbana Beautification Incorporated, UBI, to define the placement and the ownership of this structure once it is finished, that that ownership needs to pass to the town. And we need to have that understanding and in writing, which would mean that the town would own it and the town would be responsible for maintaining it and ensuring it and all of those other things. So we just wanna make sure that that's clear before we move forward. And did I forget anything on this? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a good comment.
Was that? Yeah.
I just don't want us to forget that, in my mind, when I voted for the $500,000 to come out of the Tabor Fund, that it would be paid back. And I guess, you know, this could be worked, it shouldn't be, probably doesn't go to the Pool Committee, it's probably the Finance Committee, to come up with some formula as to how we can pay the money back. That's subtle.
We already did that.
You did?
We presented that at a previous meeting.
Okay. So how you gonna pay it back?
Well, there are annual donations, and we, we discussed in that meeting how we're not touching the Tabor Fund going forward, letting it grow on its own. That's number one. If there's overages, we can put those overages back into the pool fund, and that was a recommendation to have a buffer. We can have it so that anything above construction costs can go into the Tabor Fund. None of this stuff is set in stone, because we haven't voted on that. But Barbara is presenting the recommendations of the Pool Committee, trying to get this thing funded and also maintain a stream of income so that it will be sustained.
Well, and the other thing was that we had decided that we were not going to pay the, our first responders out of the dividends that we normally had been doing. Instead, that goes right on our budget line, and we will be paying those out of our annual budget. So the money that would have been going toward them will instead be going back into the Tabor Fund.
Correct.
Or rolling back over. We won't be accepting those distributions.
So when we do this year's budget, that $30,000, we're gonna have to find room in this annual budget, and the Tabor Fund usually earns $30,000 to $40,000 on an annual basis, with the interest rates being more favorable, even though there's less money there, it should make close to that anyway, and that money will be reinvesting back into the Tabor Fund. We also discussed that, that this could be one of the avenues by which we will diversify the Tabor Fund, because all of that money has been sitting in one mutual fund, and we could get a better capture of markets in general if we start diversifying that and putting it into, even if they're safe mutual funds, we can put them into mutual funds as it gets repaid. And that should give us a buffer against the ups and downs of the market better than we have had in the past.
Well, I'm hopeful. I will tell you this, I don't think the pool will ever made a whole lot of money when we had.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not a moneymaker, no.
What I'm saying is, is I'm not sure where that money's gonna come from, from revenues to pay $500,000 back. That, that's what we gotta figure out, and.
Well, I think what, my figures that I came up with and presented several months ago, simply by not accepting the dividends and rolling them over and allowing the interest to compound, I think it should be repaid back up to the million-dollar level, probably somewhere in the area of six years.
Yeah, that's, that's the hope.
Yeah.
And, and it may not be there, but, but part of the, I mean, one of the places that, that we got in trouble before was the fact that pools are never a moneymaking.
They're not.
They're never a moneymaking adventure or venture, but they are a quality of life venture, and it is something that could be a draw to the town and is certainly good for this part of the county as a whole, which certainly fits within the.
You don't have to sell me on.
The wishes of, of the, of the Tabor Fund.
I just want the money to go back.
Right, and, and, you know, we are, we are with you, but this whole, this whole process has been trying to figure out how we could get this thing built and get us back to having that, that pool as a structure, and then going forward have a stream of income that would make it sustainable.
Right. And that wouldn't, that would be what I would call an invisible ROI. You know, when you've got quality of life assets in the town, they never, I mean, like the trolley, it's an invisible ROI. It doesn't really make money for the town, but it makes the town an appealing place for people to come and live, and they spend their money in other ways.
But my point is, is that when I voted on it, I was thinking that we're gonna pay that money back, and, and that's what your plan is.
That's it, yep.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
All right. Planning Commission.
Okay, Planning Commission did not meet in January. We were waiting for the meeting at which the new Planning Commission members were voted on by council. In February, our regular second Tuesday meeting would be on Valentine's Day. Being that we have, we don't have a rush on things that need to be accomplished immediately, we're planning on meeting on the second Tuesday in March for our very first meeting. At the close of 2022, Roy Conne and I compiled a report cataloging two years' worth of activities of the Planning Commission and submitted it to council. I don't know that it's actually been presented to council. I'd asked that it be presented at the January meeting, but I know that was not that meeting, though that is something that you should be in receipt of. It was heartening to see how much we had tried to do, much of which had been approved and passed. So it was an interesting exercise and a way for us to start the new term with things that remain to be accomplished. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Water Committee. Beth Justice is going to be the Chairman of that, but as in the case of Sandy Sturgill, and in the absence, the absence of Bill Smith, I've agreed to take that one on myself. Although Bill Smith will be of council, and if I mess this up, I will know soon enough. We did meet, and you heard the report from Davenport earlier, there are a couple different moving parts that get kinda confusing between the acronyms and the projects. USDA is the long-term loan for the well project. We, at this point, three years ago, hired AH Environmental to do a mapping of the town water system so that we knew what was in the ground. The water system is just a hodgepodge matrix of different sizes of pipes and different types of pipes, where you can have a six-inch pipe going to a two-inch pipe and then going back up to a four-inch pipe. And obviously, the, the fire hydrant is gonna be fed at a rate of the two-inch pipe, not the six-inch pipe where it started. And so at some point, we need to have all of that replaced. AH Environmental gave us an asset management plan, well, they didn't give us anything, but created an asset management plan for the infrastructure upgrades for the water system. That guesstimate as to what that will cost the town over whatever time we can get it done is $7.6 million. That $7.6 million, there are Virginia Department of Health, VDH grants, or loans that can be forgiven, which boils down to a grant that are available. And we have hired AH Environmental. They're, they're one of three engineering services firms that we interviewed, and they were the ones that did the mapping, so they know what's in the ground, and they were the ones that created the asset management plan. And so they seemed like the appropriate one for us to then have continue with engineering plan for the projects in the five phases that need to be done to bring the water system up to speed. Those, the loan from VDH, the, the grant, if you will, from VDH, in good faith, they wanna see 30% of the engineering planning done to make us more eligible and move us up the ladder to get that loan available. And so what is gonna be presented, and I guess I might as well just keep going with it, is we have proposals from AH Environmental to do that 30% of the engineering study necessary to do the infrastructure upgrades so that we can have a legitimate grant application filed with VDH. In keeping with that, there's a second contract that is being presented, and that is those engineering studies are reimbursable up to $35,000. So the engineering study is gonna cost the town, it's actually the water fund that it will cost, and the money is there. It will cost the water fund $38,000 to do this 30% engineering study that will make us eligible for monies to do the infragrade, infrastructure upgrades that is reimbursable by the second application, which is for $4,400, to try and get $35,000 back. Does that, does that make sense?
Can you say that again?
Yes, yeah, I actually can. And that's why I'm saying, it's, it's a confusing process, but it's, this is totally separate from the well, which is what we were talking about earlier. We need to have the plans, we need to have the, 30% of the plans necessary to do the upgrades in our water piping. Forget about the well, we're talking about from the well to your house. Those pipes need to be replaced. There are some places on Virginia Street where there's more patches than there are pipes. And, and so what we need to do over time is replace those things and bring us from the '60s when they were put in to the 21st century. The whole package is guesstimated to be about $7.6 million worth of work. There's money out there to do it, but we need to show them that we're actually doing the planning to get that done. They're looking for approximately 30% of that planning to be completed, not the project, just the planning, to make us eligible for those monies. And so the proposal that's before us is to turn AH Environmental loose to do that initial engineering planning so that we will be more eligible for the grant monies, and at the same time, there's a second proposal to have them file an, an application to get us reimbursed for the money they're paying themselves for that study. Is that better? Okay.
We end up in $3,000, you know, they're at 38, we can get up to $35,000.
Thirty-five, correct.
So it's $3,000 difference.
And there's no guarantee that we'll get it, but the truth is, regardless of, of whether we get that money or not, or the grant money or not, we need to know what needs to be done to get these things fixed. And there's five different phases that were identified, some were critical than others. You know, I, I don't have to tell some of you about the piping going to your houses and, and whether they need to be replaced or not. And you can ask, ask Beth Justice about, about, you know, fire suppression and, and the flow of water going down Watling Street. So those are the things that we're trying to get done, and it has to go in a stepwise fashion. This is, well, out of 100 steps, this is step 20.
Just to add to the complexity.
Thank you.
If for some reason we weren't to get access to the money that we would ultimately like, the $7.6 million.
Applying for. Applying for this 30% planning grant will get that money back. I mean, even if we don't get the other money, they are willing to kind of pay us for our efforts to get it.
Yes.
So... This part is a good...
It's a good start.
Yeah.
And there's also money for, for those engineering, the engineering work going forward in the 7.6 proposal and the grants that we've applied for. Part of that is the additional engineering studies that we need to do to move the project even farther forward. Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
As strictly a person from the crowd having nothing to do with the Water Committee anymore, if you would be so kind as to put in your two cents.
The basic thing is, is that we have to show that we're moving forward with our infrastructure upgrades. That's what VDH is looking for, and that's why we're doing these plannings. And what that does is it takes our application, puts it here, it brings it up to here for our 7.6 million. Now, we may not get that 7.6 million, but we've identified five phases of infrastructure upgrade for this town. We may be able to do one, Phase One and Phase Two. We may be able to do Phase One, Two, and Three. We may only be able to do Phase One, but we're moving the town forward and upgrading our infrastructure and the water and the system. The asset management plan that the mayor has talked about shows that our pipes, some of our pipes haven't been touched since 1962. Okay, and if they're galvanized pipes, if anybody knows galvanized pipes, they deteriorate from the inside out. You can't tell they're going bad till it's already bad.
Right.
So you're talking, you know, 40 years, 50, 60 years, these pipes have been in the ground. We have to move forward, and that's what we're doing right now, is we're moving forward with the planning part of it. And then applying to VDH to get our money back, but the planning, the initial planning, 30%. And then moving forward with the application for the 7.6 million.
Didn't we have all these pipes surveyed not too long ago?
We had it all mapped.
Yeah.
And we had an asset management plan done from that. And we have, we have tables with all the, all the dates of when those pipes were supposedly put in. So...
So what is, what is this, what is this 30%?
It is, this is, the, the work that was done, and AH Environmental did that work. That was the reason we put them on this project. AH Environmental identified where the pipes were and what the size was. Before, this is, this is just like, a year and a half ago, is when we got that study, okay?
Which we paid for.
We, we paid for it.
Actually, the mapping, I guess...
Was two years ago?
Four years, four to six years.
Yeah.
They put all this new computer stuff in is when they...
Well, no, it was about three years.
Three years ago, yeah.
When Mayor Grabit first came in, that's where we went to the professional service engineering, professional engineering service agreements with three different companies. We chose AH Environmental to do the mapping. They did the mapping, and then we asked them to turn it around since they know where the pipes were and everything, do our asset management plan. And they turned around an asset management plan on top of that.
Well, this makes sense then, because if they did their job before, they...
They know where everything is.
Right, so what that did was, it identified where the pipes were. What we have to do going forward is, is put out a plan so that when people dig, they know what pipe, size pipe they're going to put, in what location, what the capacity is going to be, what it's going to feed,
We didn't get that from the map.
Where fire hydrants are going to be, and all that kind of stuff.
I got you.
Okay, and so these contracts are basically to do that underlying planning to say, okay, it's going to be a 10-inch line to here, and then it's going to branch to there. And so as we replace all this stuff, it's going to have uniform and appropriate piping going through the town to all the residents. That's the goal over time.
I got you.
Okay?
I got you.
Any other, so can I have a motion at this point to, what we need is a motion to accept the AH Environmental contracts, AHE005 and 006, for the initial engineering study and for the application for reimbursement for that engineering study.
I'll make the motion, but I'm not sure I can say it exactly the way you said it. Do I need to, out of my turn?
You just say, "so moved."
So moved.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Yes.
All right, Mary?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Sandy? And I say yes. All right.
And I apologize to the council for opening my mouth.
Thank you.
I knew you couldn't leave.
I think there's a ventriloquist here, he's not even...
All right, moving on. I guess that takes us to public comment. Martha Rodenberg will read a letter from Megan Brock.
Okay, so this is from Megan Brockman. This message concerns the entire town, those who live here, work here, and visit here. The gas station, and that is in quotations for a reason, it's far, it's far from a gas station. It's a hideous eyesore, an embarrassment to Urbana. When driving into town, you get to enjoy the beautiful view over the bridge, the lovely houses and church, and then the most dilapidated junky view just about ruins everything else. What can be done? Why did they purchase it only to let it sit and look like it's owned by lazy individuals who obviously have no respect or care for this town? I regularly have customers ask me what's going on with it. I'd like to have, I'd like to have an answer one of these days. Thank you for your time. Megan Brockman, owner of Urbana Trading Company, 290 Virginia Street.
Okay, and I assume we should go through all these before we make any comments? All right, William Mayo.
I'm William Mayo, I live at 320 Rob Hagg Avenue. There's two things I would like to find out. Have you done anything on a boat ramp?
No.
No, okay. What's the other one?
I don't know. I forget.
Oh, how about the stop sign? It's been approved.
The stop sign has been approved by BDOT. I reported on this a couple of months ago. But the stop sign has been approved, but four-way stop sign has been approved by BDOT. And they said at the time of approval that it would probably be a while before they got to putting it up, but they would.
We don't know what a while is. Okay. Just long as you got the ball rolling.
Yep.
Dr. Malone. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm still moving just slow. And I'm Paul Malone, I live at 10 Haywood Lane here in Urbana. I'm going to talk about the Mitchell Map, one of my favorite things about the town. And I've got three things about it. What, three years ago, I made a presentation at the Historic Christ Church in Williams, on the Mitchell Map, and they used that as a fundraiser for the church. Individual Joel Strickland from Canada got in touch with Robert, I forgot his last name. Anyway, the guy that, Robert Teagle, the one that's the historian there at Christ Church. And they referred them to me. And Joel Strickland, Strickland is with the, I'm going to do this phonetically, Hodino Shaniga Confederacy. That Hodino Shaniga is now what used to be called the Six Tribes of the Iroquois. They changed their reference name. What Joel Strickland and they are the Confederacy, so it's Southern Six Tribes, it's a whole group. What they're wanting, were wanting to do is, they got in touch with me, saying that they were part of this group, and they're trying to do research on what is going on in the waterways back then. They're located in between Lake Erie and Lake Ontario, right, right at Canada, right on the border there. And they are wanting help understanding the Mitchell Map, including, as they put it, the so many small notes that they had trouble reading it. All right, so I referred them to the digital copy that they can expand and read. But they're wanting help in understanding what the map was back then, how the Six Tribes fit in with it. And they communicated with me by email, and this was last week. And I've communicated with them to get that going. So presentations, things we've done with the map in the past, continue to have activity generated from it, which of course builds the reputation of Urbana. That's one of the things, and I'm really fascinated by what they're trying to do. The second thing is, after two years of not having our essay contest, St. Clair Walker Middle School sixth-grade classes, this year, we're going to do that again. I'll give three presentations to the sixth-grade classes. They will have to come up with references to the Mitchell Map beyond what they hear from me, write an essay, and then the teachers pick the top 10. And then our group, Friends of Urbana, selects the top four out of those top 10. And award them, the first one, first prize is $100, second's 75, third's 50, and the fourth is $25, and each of them get a candy bar. So they all get something out of it. The last thing is that I'm going to put on a long-term loan to the museum, this book that my daughter got me from the Smithsonian, it was published in 2014. And it's called A Grape Maps, The World's Masterpieces Explored and Explained. And of course, our Mitchell Map is referenced on page 172. And this is something that people have been uncertain about, but I want to show it. Again, this is published by the Smithsonian, they have a Department of Documents and Maps. And it says, "The Most Important Map in North American History." So it's not just me saying it, it's also referenced that...